Oh, here he comes.
So I'll call this meeting to order. The date is October 20th. The time is 7:33 PM. We will begin with the pledge to our flag. I did a little research about virtual pledges, and apparently you're still supposed to stand. I'm also going to project an image from the 2017 Carry the Load Rally with some Yardley Borough and area veterans. So if you all would please stand and join me in the pledge to our flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, Mary Ann, would you please roll call attendance?
Ms. Thompson?
Here.
Sigal Morris.
Sorry, you're all muted. You should be able to unmute yourself, though.
I am unmuted, but I think you're sharing your screen.
Yeah, I meant to do that, just so we can follow along. Yep.
But I got rid of my screen.
Sorry.
Mr. McCann?
You're.
Ms. Sigal Morris?
I'm here, sorry.
Mr. Ross?
Here.
And Mr. Curtin?
Present.
I know Mr. Bray is not here tonight.
And Mr. Feiner.
Oh, I'm sorry. See, I don't have my list in front of me. Thank you, I'm sorry.
Do you want me to stop sharing? Is it throwing a wrench in things?
No, no.
You can see, I think you can see both if you push the participants view.
Okay, I'm fine, thank you.
Okay, are there any community announcements? It's going once, it's going twice, let me...
Oh, community announcements?
Yes, Mr. Applebaum, go ahead.
I'm trying to start the video, I apologize. I didn't know that was coming up so early in the meeting, this David Applebaum. I am living at 39 Breeze Drive, and I am now the president of Experience Yardley. Tomorrow, as part of a a program that ye olde Yardley Forest has put together called Pedal It Forward, Experience Yardley and the Police Department are joining forces with them to walk around town and hand out two flowers per person, one to keep and one to give to another person to bring joy and boost the spirits of the community. So we will be meeting beginning at noon at the mural, and I will be working till two, and I understand if the chief wants to elaborate, but I believe the police will be beginning their shift at three.
You're muted, chief.
As we've done for the past couple of years, we'll be joining this effort. The only new introduction this year is we'll be using both our intern and some auxiliary police officers as well as our regular police staff.
May I say one last, one more thing?
Go ahead.
Okay, as I said, I am now the president of Experience Yardley, and that's because our founder and visionary Jeff Bueller has moved away from Yardley, and I want to publicly acknowledge, acknowledge his contribution to this community, and I hope in the future maybe we could do something to honor him. As you can see in the background is a picture of the crowd from the dedication of the mural this weekend. Pleasantly surprised with the large but safely distanced crowd, and I hope that this gift that we gave to Yardley Borough will be treasured and will function as a a focal point for the town for many years to come.
Thank you, David, and thank you for your leadership in the borough, and we also council would like to acknowledge our thanks to Mr. Bueller. Mary Ann, please let the minutes reflect our thanks and acknowledgement. Any other community?
I would just like to also, just to add to that, I think Mr. Bueller, who is also a councilman, left a great foundation, and the last couple of years, every event, I've just seen David Applebaum just working, you know, just working hard and making it happen, and and really adding a lot of life to this town. So I just personally highly appreciative of it. I think a lot of people are, and I congratulate you on being the president of Experience Yardley, and I appreciate all that you do for Yardley in the spirit of community service. Thank you.
Any other community announcements? Please use the raised hand function or wave your arms around. I don't see any. Okay, moving on to public comment. Persons wishing to present petitions or speak before council shall state their name and address for the record. Names of the persons presenting or signing petitions to council shall be entered into the minutes. Person speaking from the floor should speak no more than once nor longer than three minutes on any one issue during the meeting. All comments from the floor shall be addressed to the council member presiding over the meeting, and there shall be no debate permitted between members speaking from the floor. So any public comment, please?
I have a comment, but the hand raised thing doesn't work in this format.
So... Not sure about that. I will stop sharing during this portion of the meeting. Go ahead, Ms. Pearl Mutter.
Yes, since the borough does not allow residents to review the minutes prior to voting on them, and since the meetings are recorded, I would like my following comments to be reflected in the borough minutes. Every council member and the borough manager are aware that they're being recorded right now. I have serious concerns about code enforcement. It appears that I'm bringing up the same issues because they're not, they never get addressed, and then new violations continue. I will be brief. 20 West College Avenue, a single-family residence since 1810, was converted to apartments after it was purchased in October 2017. Work immediately commenced without permits or zoning variances. I brought this to the attention of code enforcement, building and zoning officers, the borough manager and council several times. My initial and unresolved complaint, which was the origin of all subsequent continuing issues, is that a zoning variance was required prior to any construction. Construction on converting a single-family residence into an apartment building was and continues to be ignored by code enforcement officer. According to a right-to-no request, it showed that there's only one occupancy permit for apartment one, yet there are tenants in four apartments, including the attic, which was converted to an apartment. According to Chapter 403.65 of the Pennsylvania Uniform Construction Code, A, a residential building may not be used or occupied without a certificate of occupancy issued by a building code official; B, a building code official shall issue a certificate of occupancy after receipt of final inspection report that indicates compliance with the Uniform Construction Code and ordinance within five business days. Apartment four does not include a fire escape, does not have a sprinkler system, or second means of egress. Our code enforcement officer did a safety inspection and has allowed tenants to move in, even though this was never granted an occupancy apartment, and even though it's an attic apartment. According to Yardley Borough Code Section 27-1102, conversion of a single-family detached dwelling into two or more residential units, all conversions must comply with the United States Department of Housing and Urban Development. Minimum property standards, 4910 multi-family housing. According to Yardley Borough Code 27-1106, buffer requirements, Class C screening is required for all parking areas of over three cars and outdoor trash receptacles. All screening and buffering must meet the standards of Part VII. Since you allowed this to be converted to a parking lot, again, without any zoning or variances or hearings, it still is required to meet the it has more than four cars. And finally, according to Yardley Borough Code 27-1107, a zoning permit is required. All residential conversions must acquire a zoning permit in accordance with 27-1313. I've never been provided with any official documents that of the owners applying for multi-family status when they knew full well when they purchased the building. According to the tax records, it was single-family.
Thank you, Ms. Pearl Mutter. Does any council member or staff member wish to make, answer any of these claims or make comment? Seeing none, are there any further comments from the public? I'm not seeing any. We'll move now to the consent agenda dated October 20th. For the record, the consent agenda includes the approval of the minutes dated October 6, 2020, the bills listed October 20th, 2020, and the certificate of appropriateness number 19-02, which is a shed roof for 147 South Main Street. Does any member, do I hear a motion from council to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
Second.
Motion from councilperson Sigal Morris, seconded by councilperson McCann. Is there any discussion from council? Any discussion from the public? See any hands raised? Hearing none, I'll call the question. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries unanimously six to zero. Chief Kelly, the police report, please.
Thank you, ma'am. It's very brief this evening. I just wanted to inform everyone I filled in for Mayor Harding today on the Yardley Borough on Air show, probably not too well, but we had three great guests. Deputy Chief Maria Ferrera from our EMS unit, Assistant Chief Barry Danola from our fire department, and retired Chief Bill Wilcox from Falls Township, giving it a public safety theme. And that completes my report, ma'am.
Thank you. Any questions for Chief Kelly? Moving on, Ms. Coletti, the engineer's report, please.
Hi there, can y'all hear me?
Yes.
I'm in my car, unfortunately. Okay, so for the general updates, I really don't have anything different on that front, aside from what was submitted with my report with everybody's packages. So unless anybody has any questions about those, I definitely would like to get right into the general project updates.
Any questions on the engineer's report, separate from the project updates? From council first? Questions from the audience? Okay.
I did have, I did have one question, sorry. Liz, it's Matt Curtin. This is on the North Main Street sidewalk. Is that a project that you will sort of get into in the next part? Okay, sorry, I'll wait.
Nope, that's fine. Is it, can I get into the projects then?
Sure. Are you able to pull over?
I am about to.
Okay, perfect. That would make me more comfortable.
It would make me more comfortable.
I hope you're not in my jurisdiction.
Okay, pulled over, parked.
Thank you.
And a light. Okay. All right, so the first projects that we got would be the Main and Afton Signal. So we have to first approve the payment certificate number three, and then we need to approve the change order. So that was all sent to Paula earlier today. I don't know if that was sent to council members.
Liz, I don't think I received a payment certificate or anything today.
Oh, really?
When did they send that stuff out? We did not receive that.
At 1:30.
Oh, boy. No. No, they, let's double check on that, because I have not seen anything at all.
Matt, I CC'd you on it, too. Did you get it? I wonder if there's something weird with my email today.
I'm checking out, I'm going, I'm actually going into Outlook right now to see if I did.
Let me, yeah, let me check also.
I CC'd Matt Ross on it.
The dual map issue.
Yeah.
Oh, yep, yep, I did get it.
Okay.
I did get it late this afternoon.
So this is a payment certificate for?
For Main and Afton.
Yes, certificate number three and change order number one.
Yep, yes. Those are the two things that we would like to have approved tonight if council is comfortable with that. There was really nothing wonky about them. It was just pretty much the rest of the work. This is not quite yet the final certificate yet. We still have to do like a final walkthrough. They did already furnish a maintenance bond, which is great, but then we'll do, there will be one last certificate that releases the retainage. But otherwise, everything was fine, everything was in place, and and yeah, the change order was just to address the fact that one of the poles, we ended up moving the location at one point in time, and so we needed to adjust some of the quantities to make that all match out. So that's all that the change order is for, in addition to when they had to go back out there to update the signal box to take into account the updated permit plan when we added the advanced pedestrian phasing. So there was nothing weird. It actually is lowering the overall cost of the project, so I don't think there's anything of concern, but if council wants to punt this to the first November meeting, there's not really an issue with that.
I would recommend waiting until the November, because we need to review that, and it came in late. The payment's not going to go out. It's not on the bills list right now, so I would put this to November. I would suggest that.
Yeah, we pay bills every two weeks, so it wouldn't matter if we voted on it tonight anyway, and I don't feel comfortable calling for a vote on something we haven't reviewed, so let's, yeah, let's push that, like Paula said. Next update, please.
Sure thing. And then additionally, in regards to the Main and Afton Signal, did speak with the transportation group in regards to if there was anything else that could be done from a safety standpoint, as Ari was interested in, and so we're going to put a call in to Penn Pot directly, to ask them about other kind of calming measures that others have put forth in the district, and to see how successful they were, and see if they think any would be a good fit for our intersection and move forward with that. So that, that is going on. Um, yes, definitely. And then lastly, the that's it for Main and Afton. We're fine for Main and Afton. The next project would be the Pico Lot Property. So as was written in my report, they did announce the land acquisition grants. We were not awarded. Apparently it was very competitive this year, and they only awarded those that had sales agreements in place. However, I spent a nice conversation with the grant coordinator, and he thinks that we have a very good project. We just need to get to that sales agreement place, and that we should most definitely reapply this coming April, and then he encouraged us to attend the workshop that they host in early November. I think it's November 4th, because if you attend that workshop, then the regional advisor will come and do a site visit with you and walk you through all of the grant criteria and help you make sure that you have a very strong application. So I'm already registered for that. Paula said that she was interested as well, so I'll be sending her the link for that, and I think that it does make a lot of sense to go through it again, so if that in mind, what we need to do is get the ball rolling with Pico to get to a sales agreement ahead of April. So we would need the solicitor to put together a formal offer to Pico that reflects the cost that we were given from the appraisal.
Liz, it's Matt again. Just for my benefit, is it a requirement that you have an agreement of sale, or is it, in this case, they got, you know, more applications than they had grant money, and so they decided to filter to just those and select just those that actually already had an agreement of sale, and so we can apply again without one, but the probability of success is higher if we have an agreement of sale, or is it just, if you don't have the agreement of sale, it's not even possible?
No, it's the, the success is higher, but based off of what the grant coordinator told me and how many applications they see, it's much lower if we don't have the sales agreement. And what he did say was that we can certainly put some language in that agreement that says we, the borough would not move forward with purchasing unless we receive the grant, that they've seen that before, and then additionally, should we get into a situation where, you know, the timeline of purchasing is ahead of when they announce the grant, we can get retroactively reimbursed. They do allow that.
Okay, but the implication then is Pico, it's got to be an agreed, obviously, like a signed agreement of sale, so Pico would have to agree to sell it to us, subject to us getting the grant. They would have to accept that as a contingency?
Yes.
Okay.
Which at this point, I think they would be willing, because it shows there's a lot of evidence that that is not a developable lot. There, no one else is really going to be interested in purchasing it from them, and, you know, the last communications we had with them asked us to furnish a formal offer.
Any questions on this for Liz? You're not looking for action tonight, correct, or?
Just letting the borough know that the next action is that the solicitors should put together that formal offer. That's it, yeah.
So I believe Paula, last we talked about this, has been in talks with Pico some on this, correct, Paula?
They are not sharing their appraisal as of yet, but from what I remember, and Bucky, correct me if I'm wrong, all we can offer is what our appraisal was, right?
Yes.
At this point, we're constrained by the appraisal value. So is Pico waiting for us to move then? Like, they're probably going to negotiate, but they want to see us make that proposal based on our?
Yes, they're waiting for a formal offer to bring it back to their higher up. So the real estate department got their own appraisal done, and now want to see what our offer is.
So it's a formal offer that we need to get to Pico, not necessarily an agreement of sale as of yet.
No, not yet. Nope, we just got to do that offer so that we can begin the negotiations. Yep.
I would suggest just writing a formal letter either from Paula or council president, making the offer.
Okay.
Any questions on this update from anyone on council? Any questions from the public here? Ms. Pearl Mutter, go ahead.
Yeah, I'm a little confused with this. It sounds like kind of a catch-22 that you have to have the offer in place before you can do the grant, but what if you don't get the grant and you all, and you have this in place? What happens then?
Yeah, I think that was the point I was making, Dr. Pearl Mutter, is that you have, for this to work, Pico's got to agree to sell contingent upon the grant, right? They have to agree to a contingency in their agreement of sale. That's the implication.
Correct.
Thank you.
Mr. Applebaum, go ahead.
I apologize, I'm not familiar. Have you made it public what the the appraisal is for that property, or is it not publicly, you know, feasible to?
No, I think it's public. We had it done as part of the grant application, and the grant application is now a public document. I don't know the exact figure off the top of my head, but it was around $55,000.
Okay, well, I appreciate that, thank you.
And just to add, David, Bray, myself, and Mayor Harding met with Pico in April, I believe, at Bro Hall, and we did tell them what our appraisal was at, because we were trying to bring their appraisal down, so they, it's not a secret to them either. Mr. Guadati, go ahead.
Just a quick question. I heard, and correct me if I'm wrong, I heard that this lot is not a developable lot, and because of that, it's not necessarily a very popular lot, and as a result, how do we come up with $55,000 for a lot that nobody wants, and it's not buildable? If we are going to make a proposal, why are we giving $55,000 as a starting point? If I had a lot that was of no value to me, I would substantially want less, just to get rid of it. So I'm not, what I'm saying is, do we, we don't have to stick with that $55,000 appraisal.
So it would be nice if we could appraise our own property that we wished to purchase, but we had to hire an independent entity to appraise the land, and that is what it came out at. He was fully aware that it was floodplain and not developable when he provided that number.
That number, he appraised it at that number, whoever that may be, that does not mean that we have to offer that number. And Pico does not have to.
You're right, correct.
But you can certainly ask for less, knowing that Pico can't sell it to anybody else. Or we have, Pico has no other offers at all. It's only a suggestion. We don't have to offer the appraisal price. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Guadati. So can I ask Community and Economic Development to put your heads together and come up with a proposal for council on this item? What should our next action be? Do we want to move forward and make an offer or not? I don't think we've had a consensus of council yet, what we want to do in the absence of being awarded a grant, if we really want to purchase this without one, so I think more discussion needs to happen there. So, Mr. McCann, can I, can I punt this to you?
You sure can.
Great, thank you.
May I ask one more question?
Yes, go ahead, Mr. Applebaum.
Okay, I'm not muted. This this appraisal and the, that the borough wants to purchase this, is there an opportunity for a, for other organizations to join in on this? And if it is, what's the property, what's the idea behind purchasing the property? Is it for public use? Is it for events? I really am not sure.
Yeah, the overarching idea was to purchase the lot and turn it into a formal trailhead for the towpath and an open space for the community, especially since there are some events that have already been held at that lot in the past, so it would be, the idea would be to be able to continue to have those and maybe have more.
So like the bridge, could you partner with other organizations?
Feasibly, yeah.
I'm not, I'm not offering any money, by the way.
Yeah, I mean, the the bridge itself is already, you know, trying to find its own funding, which is the next item that we have to talk about.
I just wanted to know if it was feasible and if it was legal, that's all.
Oh, yeah, I mean, right now, all of this is sort of under the overarching Yardley Borough connectivity project, which was this whole idea about trying to make our grant applications more competitive by having this overarching project that was bringing in this Pico lot and tying it into the pedestrian bridge, and increasing access to the easement path and tying it down to the downtown. So we, when we do these applications, we refer to that overarching project and all the other ones that we're doing to show that they're not just this.
I'm sorry, what did you call that, again?
The Yardley Borough Connectivity Project.
Connectivity Project, okay, I appreciate your indulgence in me.
If there aren't any other questions on this that are totally different, we'll move on to the next project, please, Liz.
Sure. All right, next one is Mary Yardley. Sure. All right. Next one is Mary Yardley Bridge. Um, for this, uh, we're moving along, uh, as we should. We're still on time to have design finished by the end of the year. Uh, we still are waiting for final approval from DCNR with the updated grading plan so that, uh, we can finalize that schedule and get that out to the committee. Um, but everything else is looking fine. But the item that we have on tonight that I need consensus from council on is whether or not we want to apply for the DVR PC Trails Grant that is due on November 13th. So the question that we got at the last meeting is what exactly would that look like? If we were to kind of bifurcate out the portion of the project that is strictly the grading in the trail? And what would a 20% match look like and all that sort of stuff? And so when we brought that out, it kind of, um, and anything that we thought was applicable to it, like even like the mobilization costs that's associated with the overall project and the engineering costs, so that we can get as much of the bridge covered under this, but still be within the framework of what this particular grant pertains to, um, which is, uh, you know, increasing trail access and oftentimes completing trail connections for the circuit trails. Like that's DVR PC's overarching goal. Um, and so the tow path is part of the circuit trail. Our project would be rehabbing it and increasing access around the bridge, getting rid of the mound as much as possible, uh, and all that sort of stuff. So we're definitely within lines of it, but we are still waiting to make direct contact with DVR PC to verify that everything is good. Um, but the project, the application is pretty simple. It's a one-page form and they just ask for a letter and like four attachments. So the 20% match for 125,000 would be about $25,000. And then our fee to put together application would not exceed 1,500. So those are the numbers that you're looking at.
So I'll just start it out. Do I hear a motion from council to, um, instruct the borough engineer to draft this grant submission?
Still moved.
Second.
Let me present, let me present a formal motion here for it.
Sure.
I'd like to have a motion to approve RVE to prepare, um, the grant, the DVR CPC grant, um, in an amount not to exceed $1,500.
Second.
Thank you, Matt. Um, so I have a motion on the table from councilperson Ross, seconded by councilperson Finer. Any questions, comments, discussion from council? Any question?
Like a no-brainer unless I'm missing something.
Yeah, no, it's definitely a no-brainer. It's, uh, it's pretty much everything that we're doing already. It's just, it'll get, this grant will pay for it. And the, uh, we would find out in March before we even officially started work. So it's, it's kinda like, we're paying $1,500 to prepare this grant and there's a chance that they can pay for a great deal of costs that we're going to incur anyway.
Yeah, and it does fit perfectly with the goal of what they're trying to do. So it's a no-brainer for them too. You know, it just seems like a really good fit.
Yeah, and we have the full support of DCNR and several other.
Yeah, they're providing a support letter. We'll be getting a support letter from Bucks County Planning Commission. And then we're also gonna try and get one from the Friends of the Delaware Canal.
And we confirmed at the last meeting that this is not gonna push back construction at all. And also, um, that, you know, we're already have 70,000 put aside for this project, knowing we would, we'll probably have to go beyond that. So the 25,000 is well-covered already. Um.
Correct.
Any other, um, questions from council before I move to the public?
Are, are you, uh, actually like referring to that spot? It's kinda, I'm just, um, wondering in your, your communication so far, if, uh, it's being described as a trailhead? Does it actually, are you actually calling it like, uh, you know, Yardley Borough Trailhead? Cause it's kind of intriguing to have, give it a name, cause then it creates, it creates a thing around it. And then for future funding.
Oh, you mean for the Pico lot?
Yeah. Well, I mean, just to call it, to call that area a name, like the Yardley Borough Trailhead, for example. And then the, the bridge falls under that, the Pico lot falls under that, and maybe other things in the future.
Yeah, I mean, we, we dubbed it the Yardley Borough Connectivity Project. So everything has referenced that. So it's all been under that umbrella. So all the different grant coordinators at this point are relatively familiar with it, actually. So, yeah. Um, but whether or not we took it so far to kind of develop a name for the, the trailhead that we hope to have there? No, not yet, but that, that couldn't hurt.
Thank you.
All right, moving to the public if there's nothing else from council. Um, any members of the public have a question? I'm not seeing any. Uh, so I'll call the question. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries unanimously six to zero. Okay, next project, last one, I believe.
Yeah, it should be. It's a sidewalk. Um, but yeah, just to give you all a heads up, at the next meeting, we'll then have a resolution for this. And then we'll have a resolution for the PennDOT MTF grant for the sidewalk one, which you guys approved at the last meeting. Uh, the sidewalk project, right now, the only main issue we've got going on with that is that we need to get some of the utility poles moved. Um, and so we're gonna start working on that effort with PennDOT. But there's no motion from council that we need at this point.
Thank you. Any final questions for the engineer before we move on?
I was just curious if you get a chance to check on the other grant opportunity, um, that we talked about last time, that, um,
I was, yeah, I was looking into it and I couldn't find the specific one. It looks like there's some, there's various ones through DVR PC, but there weren't any that are currently open that goes specifically towards having decorative crosswalks.
Yeah, I think it was part of the whole, like, the whole transportation improvement program. It was in that.
Yeah, it was, it's the DC DI. Does that sound familiar to you? Cause that's the one that I found that seemed to tie into that. So it's not open right now.
Yeah, no, I think it's the, it's TIP, Transportation Improvement Program. It says 380 projects. It's like a huge
Yeah.
thing. And it fell under that. Um, yeah. Yeah, you, I can, I can look for it and send it to you if you want.
Yeah, no, that, that would be helpful. But when I was looking through their whole list, the only one that was currently open is the Trails one. So
Yeah.
whatever, whatever it was that you did find, it's not currently open, but it did seem like they had a few that definitely can be used towards that want to, you know, have some decorative crosswalks and things like that. So we can certainly keep our eyes out for it. But there, there's nothing open right now. There's no.
Okay. Yeah, I mean, that's what I was thinking. When that one reopens, um, you know, that we could be aware of it so we can try to apply for it.
Yeah.
Cause I mean, it seems, it seems to be a good way to fund these projects for us.
So, uh, just as a best practice, perhaps each chair of, um, a committee can regularly be going out and looking for grant opportunities. So Liz doesn't have to double as a private investigator here looking for grants.
Yeah.
That would be awesome.
Good idea.
Uh, any other questions for the engineer from council? I do see one member of public. Oh, I think the hand went down. Okay, any other questions before we move on? All right. Uh, thank you, Ms. Colletti. Uh, Madam Borough Manager, go ahead.
Okay, first thing I have is the mayor asked me to publicly thank the chief for filling in on his radio show. And he says that you did a great job. He's not too worried about his job for next year though, but you did do a good job, sir. Um, Patty and I participated in the Zoom training. It was a four-part series about capital planning and capital budging, budgeting, which will come in handy for everything we're going to start doing for next year. Work continues on our 2021 budget. We are really doing well with this. And it should be sent, the second draft, to council on or about 10/27. And I believe at our next meeting, we'll have a presentation for that. Um, we're in the middle of Verizon's franchise agreement negotiations with our Bucks County Consortium. And part of that was a potential grant to purchase, um, equipment so that we can get our cable TV channels back up and running and be able to actually show our council meetings and everything, just like some other municipalities do. So we did have a company come in and give us a quote that we are submitting to Verizon in hopes to get a grant from them. And our chairlift, that's probably over 30 years old. Finally, we believe the motor burned up and we could potentially have to get a new one, which we will have to get one. This could be in the $5,000 range. I don't know if it's gonna be done this year or it's something that we're gonna have to budget for next year, but it's just something to keep in mind that will be coming. Next Monday is another zoning hearing board. And this is another floodplain one that has been postponed for a couple of months. So the solicitor already has been, okay to go. And I believe Councilman Ori Finer and I are gonna be sending out an email blast tomorrow using our new platform, which is Mad Nimi, I think it's called, Ori, right? And one of the things we're gonna be sending out is the rec board is doing a virtual pumpkin carving contest. And then also I would like to send out our leaf collection dates as well. And we do have close to 500 email addresses on there. So we're gonna get a good portion of the borough. And then something that I would like to try to really get rolling on is, Councilman Thompson talked about street captains so that we can try to capture almost everybody in the borough. And I would like to categorize it by street so that if something, God forbid, happens, the river's gonna flood, we can just pinpoint those streets down there and send them an email. And that's about all we have happening so far. I think that's it on my report.
I have a question. Um, are there, were there any staff birthdays celebrated this week?
No, thank you.
Your birthday, your birthday isn't today?
Yeah, that is the rumor. Yes, it is.
Well, everybody unmute yourself and yell out a happy birthday to our manager. Happy birthday, Paula.
Very much. I know where you live.
I got a text from, um, from someone. It wasn't my idea. So. Alrighty, any other questions and actual questions for the borough manager?
You mean, public where?
Uh, from council first and then I'll call. I don't see any. And we do have raised hand from Ms. Promater. Go ahead.
Hi, happy birthday, Paula. And
Thank you.
I'm so happy that you're getting this email blast set up. Any way I can help, I, I will to try to, um, get your emails. Um, I'm hoping that in addition to, um, social events, that as part of these, um, emails, that we can start adding, um, things like, uh, the agenda and, um, you know, substantial things that I have, um, talked about before, like the raising of taxes and, and just so that there's more transparency. Um, you know, it just seems, again, not everybody's on Facebook and Facebook, I know, tends to be more socially directed. But, um, I'm really happy that, that you're doing that. And, um, just one other thing, if there is something with the flood, I, I think it should probably go to everyone because people like me who've been through the floods would, would wanna help my other neighbors. Um, but again, thanks for doing that.
Perfect.
Yeah, that, that's a good point. I just, I just want to just could jump in here. I think, uh, Paula, you and I will talk about it more tomorrow, but we can segment it, but we might miss people. So hopefully it won't happen so often that we have to send specific emails. Inevitably, some people, we won't know that they're in the area, et cetera. So.
I was just using that as a, for instance.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, but if there was, God forbid, a flood, yeah, you would notify the whole town because there would be road closings and stuff like that. But, yeah.
Or any other questions? Please use the hand, raise hand function so I can go in order as they come in, please. Keep it official.
For.
First one to find it gets to talk.
Aye, fay.
All right, Mr. Guadati, you are the winner. Go ahead.
Hey, how you doing? Hey, uh, just a heads up, the mass email that is, is gonna be started soon. Uh, I'm assuming that for the first time, it's gonna show up in everybody's junk mail. Is there a way to, on the subject line, like what I do with the planning commission? Every single email I send to my planning commission members, I, the subject line starts with Yardley Borough Planning Commission hyphen. And they know it's coming from me. Is there a way to do that in the subject line from this email that's gonna be sent out so that I know where it's coming from and I won't arbitrarily think it's junk?
I have no idea, Ori.
Yeah, you know, we're gonna follow the best practices. It's really designed for high deliverability. And, uh, once, uh, we're not gonna have a problem with it because, uh, once people get used to, um, receiving our emails, uh, I mean, there's two sides to it. One is, uh, I think, um, you're talking about people inadvertently thinking it's junk and not looking at it. Um, the other side that's the, I'd say the first stage is to make sure it actually gets delivered. Because if you have like Gmail, for example, if the way it works is when a certain number of people say this is spam, then they flag it and then your deliverability goes down and you become known as a spammer. And then it becomes very hard to reach people. So our primary first step is to make sure that, um, it reaches people and doesn't have content that looks like spam. So what Paula wants to send is perfect because it's not gonna look like an advertisement. I mean, it, it's talking about an event, but it's not gonna look like buy this. And as far as a subject, we'll just follow whatever best practices. It's a good idea, but also it's gonna say from Yardley Borough in the front.
You know, it will, it will say from Yardley Borough.
Yeah.
So I just want some way to recognize it. That's all.
Absolutely, absolutely. But we might, we might wanna say like official communication or something. We'll figure out, not too long, but something that makes it obvious, it's consistent. I think it's a good idea. And that's for the second part of having people consciously look at it and say, oh, this is from Yardley.
Ori, do you recommend me sending out something first tomorrow with our Gmail ones that I usually send out the email blast with? Saying that we're changing the platform?
Yeah, look out for the, you know, the sooner you, you look out for emails coming from that and around the same time. It's a great idea. It's like
Okay.
Cause then people will see it close by. People's attention span with email is extremely short. So if you send it today, say it's coming tomorrow, um, like by tomorrow, so many things have happened in the world of email that they forgot. But if you send it like almost at the same time, then look out for it. You'll be receiving today this other thing, you know? I think it's a good idea. That'll be our final email from the Gmail.
Okay.
So long. All right, uh, Mr. Applebaum, go ahead.
Yeah, just a quick question. I heard, I thought I heard, uh, Paula mention something about the zoning board. And, um, I have a question. I understand, well, actually, I, I'm not even understanding. I know that my neighbor, uh, moved. And I'm not sure that they're still living in Yardley. And, um, if anyone is a, uh, member of a committee in the borough of Yardley, uh, must they resign from a committee if they are not a, uh, a resident anymore?
That particular resident is still a resident.
Oh, yeah.
He moved. He, yeah, he's renting within the borough. And then once he is ready to move to his next destination, that's when he anticipates resigning. But yes, anybody who's not living in the borough, unless there's something different that I'm not aware of, and Bucky can help with that, they, they're asked to resign.
And that's the same for, there's another, um, sewer, I believe, that someone may be moving or has moved. And I was just curious.
Yeah, the general rule is that anyone who serves on a committee or board needs to be a borough resident. There are exceptions, so we'd have to look at this particular, uh, committee or board that's in question to make sure. But, you know, the general rule usually applies.
Okay. I was just curious. Don't wanna kick up any dust.
Yeah, you're always welcome to send an email to Paula. We don't need to publicly shame people. So just send a quick email.
I wasn't, I wasn't trying to shame anyone.
No, I know. I'm just, just a PSA for the future. We don't need to make this a regular thing. So just send an email and we'll audit our, audit our books, make sure everyone's living here. All right. Any other questions for Paula on her report before we move on to the, um, the DCED audit? Okay, uh, next item, Paula.
Next, we have our proposal from our auditors for our 2020 audit. This is something that they do every year. We do not need a single line audit, which is triggered by our grants and everything. So their proposal to come and do our complete DCED, DCED audit is, I want to say, eighty-one hundred dollars, which is just a little bit more than last year. I don't remember exactly what last year's was, but these guys have been great. They're in four times a year. Anytime we have questions, they're always there for us. They've been with us for quite a few years, so they really know the ins and outs of the borough. I would highly recommend retaining Beaverville for another year to do our borough audit.
Do I hear a motion from the floor to submit this audit, to accept this audit proposal?
Motion.
Second.
Motion's been put forth by councilperson Curtin and seconded by councilperson McCann. Any discussion? Um, any questions from residents? Seeing none, I'll call the question. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Aye, opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries unanimously six to zero. Thank you, Manager Johnson. Moving on to the solicitor's report.
Uh, thank you, Vice President Thompson, but I don't have any report this evening, so you can move on.
I love it. All right, moving on to the mayor's report. He is absent, so we won't have those. Now, moving on to council member reports. Before we begin, you have all been waiting for the announcement of the new committee assignments, given that we have a new council member. So I'm going to read them off. You should have all received them in an informal way before the meeting. We'll wait a week until we post them. If anyone has any issues or you're unhappy or questions, reach out to me or Paula or David. David did approve these as that's his role as president. And, um, and we'll shuffle things again. So General Government, I'll remain Chair. Uh, Matt Curtin will be the second member and Kim Siegel-Morris will be the third member. Just as an FYI for all of the committees, some of them have three on them because the way we structured it is that so someone will definitely be on each committee beyond 2021. So we're retaining someone on that committee in the next term of council that knows what was going on before the new council joins. Um, Community and Economic Development, John McCann will continue to chair. Matt Curtin will be the second member. Public Works, Matt Ross will continue to chair. Ori Finer will be second. John McCann will be third. Public Safety, Kim Siegel-Morris will continue to chair and Matt Ross will join her, and the mayor also serves on that committee. Community Outreach, Ori Finer will chair. I will be the second member. For Liaisons, zoning hearing board is Paula and the solicitor. Planning, Matt Ross, Harb, John, EAC, Matt Curtin, Parks and Rec, me, Shade Tree, Uri. Civil Service, the mayor vacancy does not have one. Human Relations Commission, Kim Siegel-Morris. Sewers, David. And then the Special Committees, Reading Avenue, is Matt Curtin. Trenton Airport is Kim, and Experience Yardley is Uri. Any questions on those? They will be effective starting next week unless, obviously, if the committee doesn't have three people on it and you want to continue to attend meetings, you're welcome to do so. See any questions from the public on those? My participant thing, why don't I, there it is. Don't see any. Okay, so let's start with council member reports, starting with Mr. Curtin.
No report.
Thank you, Mr. Ross.
Um, Public Works met earlier today, but we covered everything in the engineering report, so no report.
Thank you, Ms. Siegel-Morris.
No reports this week.
All right, uh, Mr. Bree is not here. For myself, General Government met this evening. We talked about the uh, community rating system discount program and starting a webinar series. So each member of that committee picked a topic and we're going to have our first one next month on, um, forgot what the first one was we picked. I think, oh, yes, Flood Insurance 101. We also talked about the financial and comprehensive plans and revamping, or in the case of the financial plan, drafting those in the next twelve year, twelve months, so starting January first and concluding in December of next year. So look out for more info on that. Also, with regards to the budget, you will all be sent a copy of the budget in a week. However, the members of General Government, uh, it will only be able to be two of us because you would, you would be the third person coming to the meeting. So Mr. Curtin and myself would like to meet with each member of council one-on-one to go through the budget and answer any questions that you have, um, just so you're more comfortable asking, you know, your, your detailed questions rather than in a council, during a council meeting. So if you could proactively send your availability to us for the next week and a half so that we can schedule those, that would be appreciated. We only need probably thirty minutes, but if you think you have a lot of questions, then the longer window. Any questions on that? Okay, uh, moving on to councilperson McCann.
No report.
Councilperson Finer.
No report.
All right, any discussion items tonight that, um, haven't already come up? Council members, any? Any from the public? Don't see any. Okay, other business. Whose agenda item is this? I'm not sure.
I had to find my unmuted button. Uh, yes, I would like to propose that council can, uh, votes on adopting the ordinance four eighty-seven, um, which amends chapter fifteen of the Yardley Borough Code regarding processions and assemblies that we discussed and advertised, um, at our last meeting.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
So the motion has been put forth by councilperson Siegel-Morris, seconded by councilperson Ross. Discussion from council.
I'll just reiterate my objections. Basically, you know, the First Amendment is a really, you know, it, it's highly valued in our society, and I look at it, you know, it, we've had little protests throughout the time I've, I've been here. Certainly, the protests from all accounts seem very peaceful. I think this puts an unreasonable restraint on people's ability to express their opinions in a public forum. Um, I think, you know, having three weeks, you know, to, to put in request, also to have, um, an umbrella policy. I, I do think that is a little bit onerous. On top of it, just going down, I think, I, I like the fact that there's an appeal process that you can uh, ask to have that overturned. I saw that in, uh, in the law as well. You know, with anything, these kind of restraints, you know, there are, I know it's been proved constitutionally, but there are usually three, four justices who disagree, who believes that these types of things are unreasonable restraints. But I just, you know, frankly, I just didn't see the need. Um, I think it could stifle people if, you know, there is a really pressing issue, issue in society. I think it's important to hear, and especially, um, it didn't seem, it seemed overbroad in terms of the scope of protest, um, and even sheer number, and it also could impact other events in Yardley as well. That could be, prove more costly, but I understand the thought behind it, just disagree, um, in terms of the law, the scope of it. I think, um, it could have been more narrowly drawn, um, and the timeframes not be as long, um, I think would be helpful for me, but certainly understand it. So that's all I wanted to say on it.
Thank you, councilperson McCann. Any other, um, questions or comments from members of council?
I, I, I think it's, uh, I just want to chime in here. I want to thank, uh, Councilman McCann for your perspective on it. Um, and I think it's a tough one because uh, for me personally, I agree with you and pretty much everything you said. Uh, people should be able, I mean, it's part of our, of our constitution. People have a right to express themselves, whatever the view is. And af- after reading this, I actually think it's pretty well-written. Um, it, it mentions the Constitution, both the Pennsylvania and the US Constitution. It talks about, you know, what essentially, how to obtain the permit, and if they can't get insurance, don't have the financial means, that it, that it's that they don't have to have it. So it seems like it, uh, is, um, it, it goes up to that line, but it, it doesn't, to me, it doesn't seem like it really is blocking anybody's ability to express themselves. It's kind of urging them to do it with the cooperation of the borough, which I think is the whole point, because I think that you know, the, the police is, the chief and the, and the police force has to deal with very difficult situation for low staff force. And so I think, you know, for me, and I'm just showing you my view here, because I think we all have to figure out what we feel comfortable with. I don't like either the idea of limiting public assembly, but I don't really think we're doing that. I think we're just trying to create a situation where, uh, we have coordination. And if somebody really wanted to express themselves without coordinating with us, the reality is that just looking at the way this is written, they could do that. If that's their only objective, they could do that. So I don't really see that we're stopping them from doing anything, but we're just urging them.
Thank you, councilperson Finer. Any other comments or questions from council? Okay, moving to the public, Ms. Prometter, go ahead.
Hi, I have, um, two, two things to say. One was just a technical question. When I reviewed the ordinance, it has a signature for, um, Paula that says Yardley Borough Secretary. Is that a mistake or is Paula functioning as both the Borough Secretary and the manager? It just might have been a mistake on the document itself. Um, that was one thing. Another thing, a little more substantial, um, Pennsylvania is an open carry state and, um, a lot of the protests, people on both the left and the right, um, political spectrum have been doing a number of open carry protests. And I don't, I know that it's a very broad, um, how this is written, um, but I guess that would be allowed. Was that even, is there even a way to prohibit that? I just was curious.
Uh, Mr. Clauser, do you want to take that one?
Uh, it's an entirely separate issue. It's got its own governing law.
Um, as, oh, go ahead.
No, I was gonna say, I'm not seeing how Yardley could require people to have a permit to carry a gun if they don't have to have a permit, you know, to whatever. I don't know.
So as for the Borough Secretary piece, Bucky, correct me if I'm wrong, but the Borough Secretary is a position that we're required to have under state ordinances, whereas the Borough Manager is just a position we've created and we aren't required to have one.
Correct.
So again, is Burr, is Paula having two positions? And if she does, is she being paid for two separate positions or is it just a formality?
The items under the ordinance of Borough Secretary, as it is written, were enveloped into the Borough Manager position, I believe, in twenty seventeen or twenty eighteen, and that, um, that's how the job description was posted when we, um, searched for a new Borough Manager. So it's just one position.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Seeing none, I'll call the question. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Abstentions? Motion carries five, one, zero. Thank you. Um, before we adjourn, I'd just like to remind everyone that the next, the normal date when we would meet next is Election Tuesday, November third. So I'd encourage everyone to vote, but also remind you that our council meeting, um, will fall on Wednesday, the fourth, at seven thirty. All of the council committee meetings will also be rescheduled for that night, so please plan accordingly. Move your schedule around if you have any standing Wednesday night plans. Are there any questions on that before I hear a motion to adjourn?
Motion adjourn.
Do I hear a second? Thank you, uh, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries. Thank you, everyone. Have a good night.
Good night.
Good night, everyone. Thank you.